This conference will now be recorded.
I'm Jesse. Call this meeting to the Sedalia City Council, the work will open with prayer and blessed allegiance.
Would you rise as able and join me in our invocation? Dear Lord and Father of all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as Sedalia City Council, the mayor, administrator, staff, board members need to hear about and discuss and make decisions for the betterment of our city. We're grateful for their service and dedication to our citizens. And we ask your protection for all of our county and city first responders, police, sheriff, fire, ambulance, EMTs, hospital staffs, all who work 24/7 to serve and protect us often at their own peril. We are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic, for which so many have fought and died, decreed and preserved for 246 years. And especially want to mention so many of the volunteer organizations in this country that's made it so great. The United Way Day of Action last Saturday when 200 volunteers came out, they need a special blessing. And today we celebrate Juneteenth, a Juneteenth holiday. It took from the beginning of 1863 till June of 1865 till the last of the enslaved were informed of their freedom. Something to celebrate. We ask your blessing and protection for all of our military and civilians who serve our country today throughout the world, protecting our way of life, to keep us safe from threats from without and more sadly threats from within. And now as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again. In all this, we pray in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Our flag is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Bogus is absent. Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
First item we have on our agenda is public hearing regarding the annexation petition for Cloverdale Park. Before we go and open the public hearing, we'll go ahead and have Administrator Shaw give us some background on this.
Okay. Basically, the Cloverdale Park out on 32nd Street, and I think I can bring it up here. Get it on the screen there. Basically, what we're talking about is these two parcels that are highlighted here that now with this property that was the state fair, expansion of the state fairgrounds, that 200 acres is now in the city. So now, as you can see, that it is, Cloverdale Park is contiguous right there. So that being contiguous with now the new city limits, that parcel can come in as well as that parcel. Both of those being belonging to the city and known as Cloverdale Park. And so we received or executed a petition on behalf of the city, the owners. And it seems kind of funny to petition yourself, but that's the way the statute works. So we have received the petition and we have to 14 days, no, no shorter than 14 days after receiving that petition, we have to have a public hearing. This public hearing is to hear any comments from anyone in the public, which is to state their position on whether it is appropriate to annex that property or not.
Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public here that would like to speak regarding this annexation petition? If they could please step to the podium, you have three minutes, just ask that you state your name and your address and then you can give your testimony. Going once, going twice? Well, having heard no public comment, we'll go, we're taking a, regarding the annexation petition. Do you guys want to give a public comment regarding it?
I'm going to read questions rather than comments.
Okay.
My name is Bruce Gabriel. My wife Jackie and I live at 3425 West 32nd Street. And our purpose tonight is to just hear not only what the plans are, but to see if there's any discussion, can be any discussion, or plans or proposed plans in reference to changes to 32nd Street itself. We literally live at the last house next to city limits, right where the road narrows, if y'all are familiar with 32nd Street, where that road narrows. And it is, at times, we take our lives in our hands to pull out of our driveway. When folks primarily are coming from the west and driving 60 miles an hour and supposed to slow down to 25 or 35, and they don't often do it. So I'm making an assumption that with this annexation, there's going to be some changes to 32nd Street going west over time, and I would just like to hear them as they stand today.
Yeah, I do not know that we're, are there any plans in the works as far as, do you know of any plans in the works as far as widening 32nd Street?
Yeah, I do know that the county has applied for a grant to do that. Now, I do not know the status of that. I know it's been some time since then, but, oh goodness, it's been about three weeks ago that I asked and they had no update at that point. But their plan at that time, at that point is just to widen it. It is still a county road at this point, you know. But then, you know, there's, there's still going to be a portion of it that is going to be in the county even if we get out here.
Right.
Because we're just going to pick up then again where those escrures are. We certainly will have it on our strategic planning when we meet with council again this year, what, what we will be able to do with it. Now that we're able to bring it into the city limits, then yeah, I think it bears a, what are we going to do with it now? What are we going to do with the road?
Okay.
But yeah, we're certainly aware that how bad that road is if it's pretty narrow.
And then that strategic planning session occurs in, was it mid-January?
January.
Yeah, mid-January, so. Thank you. Anyone else? Having heard no other public comment, we'll go ahead and close this hearing. Next item of business on our agenda is a presentation from our new United Way director on the initiatives we have in and around Sedalia. So we'll go ahead and invite her up to introduce herself to council.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say thanks to City Council for allowing me to come and present to you today. My name is Rochelle Simon. I am the executive director of the United Way of Pettis County. I grew up in Sedalia and I've been gone for about 20 years, and in March I came back. It's been really wonderful to step into this role, really wonderful to be back and a part of a community that really raised me in so many ways. So I'm going to share a little bit about, and I'm sure folks in this room have, some people probably know a lot about the United Way of Pettis County, maybe other folks know a little bit, and maybe some not at all, so I'm going to try to just cover the basics. I'm going to talk about the mission and the vision a little bit and the work that we do, and then really close highlighting the day of action, which was mentioned in the prayer tonight, so we'll get some highlights and some fun photos from that, too. So to begin, the mission of the United Way is to unite people and resources to improve the lives of folks in Pettis County. Of course, Sedalia is a big part of Pettis County. And so it really is about local people having local resources to solve, to bring local solutions. So the one thing that I wanted to start with is the history. The United Way of Pettis County has been doing good work for a long time here. It was originally established in 1963 as the United Fund, and it was reorganized in 1974 and became a member of the United Way Worldwide. So I think when people hear United Way, they think big national brand, and that's true, but every United Way is its own nonprofit, its own 501(c)(3) with its own board, it's very localized. So the way the whole thing is set up is that 99% of what the United Way of Pettis County brings in stays in Pettis County. 1% goes to pay our dues to be members of the United Way Worldwide. And with that membership, we get some great things. We get the 211 network, I'll explain that if you don't know what that is in a little bit. We get brand marketing, right? So I get to use the United Way brand, training and guidance, which is really helpful for myself and board members and volunteers to share the wisdom across the nation, it's an international organization as well. And then we get access to research data, which helps us drive to think about what are the needs in a particular place. So just a little bit about the history. So here's our structure. The United Way is ran by a board of directors, right? We're a nonprofit. So currently, we have six voting board members, the president, vice president, treasurer, secretary, and a couple of other folks, and a president appointee. So that's someone who's been president and is there to continue to pass on wisdom to our organization. Then we have myself, the executive director. I'm the only full-time, only employee of the nonprofit organization. It really is run on volunteers and based on bringing people together. One of the big things we do is community partner organizations. So it's built on the idea that we have United Way funded funder partners, so folks like businesses, organizations, individuals that give money, give time, give resources, and help us then be able to do things in the community. Then we have United Way Pettis County funded nonprofits. So we help fund a number of local nonprofits in the area. I'll show you the list for 2023 in a little bit, but there's 13 of those in our local community now. Another thing that we do as a part of our structure is volunteers. So you saw this in our Day of Action, and I'll highlight that again, but we have, all of our board members are volunteers, right? Our campaign committees are volunteers, our finance committees are volunteers. Anybody that's showing up to help us in a variety of different capacities, whether that's for events that we run or for work that we do, most folks are volunteers. So it's really built on the sense that it takes a neighborhood to take care of one another and that we really give out of that sense of service. So it's really, it's a beautiful thing, I think it's inspiring. So our impact areas, we have three major impact that we focus on at the United Way of Pettis County, education, health, and financial stability. We do that through, when you think of the United Way, I kind of think of three things. The first is our own programs that we run, so I'm highlighting those here. So one of those is the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. Have folks heard of that? Some people, yeah. So what it does is, Dolly Parton obviously funds a lot of it, but every, the way it's set up is a local place has to also contribute funding. So the United Way of Pettis County pays about $27 to $29 a year per child. So right now, we have over 1,300 kids under the age of five getting free books a month mailed to their home through Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which is, which is really great, it gets people excited about literacy at a young age. 211, I mentioned earlier, so folks that don't know what 211 is, think 911, emergency, right? 211, resources. So if you're somebody that, you're like, I'm not sure where to get help with food, I'm not sure where to get help with housing, I don't know really what's happening in my local community, but I have this issue and I need help, you can call 211 and they will help get you connected to the right place that's going to help you meet that need. So a form of calls were put in last year to the 211. Another thing is our single care cards, these are prescription discount cards. Last year, we give them out for free at the United Way. And last year, we had 347 individuals use those with a total of over $50,000 in savings. So it really helps folks as different prices on prescriptions are going up and people are working on that. You can have insurance, but then you just either choose insurance or this, based on what works for you. And then our financial stability. So we have funded partner programs that really help folks when they run into problems being able to afford certain things. So some of those are, we have APDs, Association of Persons with Disabilities, we fund, and they helped last year 21 folks with developmental disabilities get assistance with services that they needed. Cactus, you might have heard of, we helped fund them as well. So 633 families helped to get school supplies last August. Children's Mercy is one of our funded programs. And this is a question I get, Children's Mercy isn't in Pettis County, why are they on the list? Well, a lot of folks in Pettis County need the services of Children's Mercy Hospital when they need them, right? And so last year, United Way of Pettis County was able to pay all of the medical bills that folks weren't able to pay in Pettis County for Children's Mercy. It's a huge deal. So that was 28 families that we were able to help out out of Pettis County that are using Children's Mercy. I could go on about many other funded programs, but ours are just a few. I wanted to highlight some of our numbers from last year. So we had over 11,600 individuals that were served. 16%, according to the US Census Bureau, of Pettis County residents were at the poverty line or below. And the Pettis County, United Way, United Way of Pettis County is able to serve 27% of the population through all of these different ways, so whether it's our own programs or funded partners. So our goal, right, is to really be able to support people and meet the needs of our community. And it's, it's driven by neighbors helping neighbors, helping people see what the needs are and reaching out to, to people in our neighborhood and say, hey, are you willing, do you care about some of these things and in what ways can you help? So here's our 2023 funded partners. We've got 11 funded partners that we fund throughout the year, and our venture grants are one-time grants given to certain folks for certain specific things that they might need. So you'll see a lot of nonprofits that you might recognize in our community, not going to read all of them, but they're great partners and certainly a big part of what we do, we cannot do without them. All right, Day of Action, last Saturday. First of all, I want to thank the folks in this room that were there and that were supportive. So thanks to Councilman Oldham and Foster. Bogus isn't here, but she was there as well in Kelvin Shaw, so thank you. It really goes a long way to see the city support coming out. So this past Saturday at Hubbard Park, we had over 250 volunteers on 20 volunteer teams. So those teams were churches, organizations, and businesses. We had 15 projects. Those projects were eight individual homes. We helped out at the Lamont Senior Housing Center. We helped out with Open Door, the Head Start near Hubbard Park. And also Children's Mercy came and we put together Happy Kits for them at Hubbard Park, which was great. And then the six-block radius around Hubbard Park, we did a cleanup and knocked on doors and canvassed a little bit and were able to help folks in that neighborhood, too. We had 10 sponsors that donated materials, which were essential to making this happen, right? From the food to the materials that were doing the home repair projects, to giving of their time to show up and help that day. There was also, we got smoke detectors from the American Red Cross, so we were able to get 20 homes free smoke detectors that needed it, so upping safety in our community, which is always great, too. So this is a picture of the Yaltrusa Group who brought breakfast that day. It was, it was just a lot of fun. I heard a lot of different folks say it kind of lifted their spirits a little bit and they, they had a good time being able to serve, serve folks in that way. A few photos, of course, so we have some church groups. This is a youth group, Impact First Church, that worked at a home, Recovery Life House, they worked at the Lamont Senior Housing, Duke Manufacturing helped residents, and she said she just didn't have words for how grateful she was. When I, when I checked in with her at the end of the day, she, she really just was overwhelmed and couldn't, couldn't really say much, but it was, it's a really, big group that came out in different ways. Also, it's Heartland Coke, so I'm not going to do all of them, there were 20 of them, I just did a couple, highlighted a few of them. But Heartland Coke had a couple of projects, home repair and cleanup projects, Septagon was painting Open Door, Center for Human Services painted in an individual home, and Buffalo Health, that's a head start they did, they painted all four classrooms that day, too. I could show you so many photos, I know Randy took a few photos that day, but a lot of people took photos, and it was, it was a really, it was really fun to see all the folks just get to know each other and also build community in their groups, right? As a company, as an organization, come together around that, too. So a big thing, what I always say is, is everyone can make a difference. We need everyone to make this work, that's the United Way, that's what I always say, it's true. So the ways I think about it is in this order, time, talent, and treasure, right? When you talk to people today, we need people power, we need people that care, people that show up, people that want to help. And so donating your time is huge. So you certainly put together a volunteer team, as a city you could do that, but also in any other organizations you're a part of. We always do Day of Action. One of the things I'm trying to get off the ground, and I've had a lot of interest from the team leaders, is continuing to maybe keep those teams mobilized throughout the year. So if a need comes up, maybe they're willing to do it twice a year instead of just once, or maybe three times a year, right? Next is your talent. We are looking for some board members, that's the way nonprofits work, they, they need board members who share in the mission and vision and the goals of the United Way of Pettis County, if they're interested, you can let me know. And of course, our resources and finances. So we have payroll deduction opportunities, and this is a big deal because it's a small personal sacrifice, folks that give $5, $10 a month, this is a long way in our community, right? Those members add up. And then participate in any of our fundraisers, or earmark donations for focus areas, those education, health, financial stability that you care about. So one of the things that I'll do is I'm, I'm looking forward to getting to know all of you a little bit more. I'm still new back in this area, so I'm going to email you, hopefully we can get to know each other a little bit and hear about what's on your heart, what do you care about? Also, hear about the needs. What, what is it that you see as an area that we need to be focused on? Because one of the big things that I see as a part of what the United Way mission is, is bringing the right people to the table to try to move the needle on some of the things that we all want to make better in our community. So last, I just want to say, public support is huge, so again, thank you. Thank you to Reanna, and thank you to folks that were able to come out, Tom. It's a huge, it was a big deal to have folks there and to, to see you all do the proclamation and to say, hey, we as a city support this, and this is important to us, too. And to just know who we are, right? To know who we are and what we do. And so when people say, what is the United Way, what is that about? You know a little bit and can share with them, so public support means a lot. So that's all I had, I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart and introduce myself a little bit. And obviously, if there's any questions or comments, I'm happy, happy to hear those, too.
On the prescription drug part, so does it have any like income requirements or aid requirements, if that's available to anybody?
Anyone. And the way it works is, so if you would like me to bring some over and have, you know, here in this building to hand out to people, I'm happy to pass them out to them ever wants some. The way it works is you can't use it at the same time as insurance, but you can have insurance and choose to use this. And a lot of times, the pharmacist will tell you which one's going to be more affordable. A lot of times, it's like 80% off some of the prescription medications, which is a big savings in a month.
Yeah, and if you, if you could bring some of those over, we'd certainly, if we could put them down here in finance where people are coming in and walking in.
Yeah.
We have a lot of elderly folks that still like to come inside, it'd be good for them to have that.
Yeah. It's the same thing for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, you just have to live in Pettis County. If you have an address in Pettis County and you're under the age of five, we put your name on a book and send it to you, it's pretty cool, too.
Well, thank you for everything you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we appreciate you coming down and sharing all that with us, very nice. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the previous session minutes dated June 5, 2023. These are council meeting minutes, do I have a motion in a second?
This is approved.
Actually, I have a correction on it.
Okay.
There was a, on page six of that, under community development, it has my name listed as chairwoman and vice chair, and we just need to correct that to say Tina as vice chair.
Okay. See, I have, so would you like to make that as a motion to pass the amended as stated?
Motion to pass.
Second. Okay. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passed, thank you, council. Next item will be the acceptance of the Traffic Advisory Commission minutes dated April 12, 2023. Do I have a motion in a second?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion pa, although opposed, motion passes, thank you, council. And now we have the acceptance of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, meeting minutes dated May 3, 2023. Do I have a motion in a second?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you, council. Now we have the roll call, the standing committees, our first is Finance Administration. Chairman Marshall, you have the floor.
And we have one item tonight, a brief presentation on our financial status from our finance director, Jessica Fox.
I am reporting on April sales today. The fiscal year-to-date net sales and use tax year-to-date is up almost $278,000 or 6.7% due primarily to higher sales tax. That's a budget variance to the positive of just over $111,000. Franchise tax is higher than the prior year, mostly due to that charter communication settlement of over $377,000 that we talked about at the last meeting. Transportation tax is higher due to gasoline tax, although gasoline tax did drop this current month, and that has been a change over the last several months, so that's something that we can keep an eye on. Property tax payments, majority of those collections come in in December and January, so that number will change the greatest when we get to December. Any questions?
Questions, council? All right, thank you, Director Fox.
I'll add.
All right. Moving along to community development, Chairwoman Foster, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have four items this evening, the first of which is approving and annexing a property. At the last meeting, a public hearing was held to hear comments about the appropriateness of annexing, of an annexation petition for the property commonly known as Lot 32, Gables Phase 2. No comments were received during the hearing nor since then. Now that the required time period after the hearing is passed, council can consider an ordinance to annex the property into the city and that recommends approval.
Okay, do I have any discussion regarding the ordinance to annexing Lot 32, Gables Phase 2? Having heard done, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2023-106. An ordinance of the City of Sedalia, Missouri approving and annexing an unincorporated area owned by Vyacheslav Kolsnyk into the City of Sedalia, Missouri, adjacent and contiguous to existing corporate limits of said city.
Second reading. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you, council.
Bill number 2023-106. An ordinance of the City of Sedalia, Missouri approving and annexing an unincorporated area owned by Vyacheslav Kolsnyk into the City of Sedalia, Missouri, adjacent and contiguous to existing corporate limits of said city.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Seven yes, one yes.
Ordinance passes, thank you, council.
The second item I have is another annexation for Lot 33, Gables Phase 2. And again, at the last meeting, a public hearing was held to hear comments about the appropriateness of annexing petition for the property commonly known as Lot 33, Gables Phase 2. No comments were received during that hearing and nor since then. Now that the time, has required time period has passed, council can consider an ordinance to annex the property into the city.
All right, any council discussion regarding the ordinance annexing Lot 33, Gables Phase 2? Having heard done, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2023-107. An ordinance of the City of Sedalia, Missouri approving and annexing an unincorporated area owned by Eugene Lemansky into the City of Sedalia, Missouri, adjacent and contiguous to existing corporate limits of said city.
Second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you, council.
Bill number 2023-107. An ordinance of the City of Sedalia, Missouri approving and annexing an unincorporated area owned by Eugene Lemansky into the City of Sedalia, Missouri, adjacent and contiguous to existing corporate limits of said city.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Seven yes, one yes.
Ordinance passes.
The third item I have this evening is granting a rezoning application for a property located at 101 South Washington. The owners of the property at 101 South Washington are operating an auto repair business and in conjunction with this business are progressing into an auto salvage. The property is currently a zone M1, light industrial, which allows the body shop business, but does not allow a salvage business. Therefore, the owners have requested to rezone the property to M2, heavy industrial. The M2 zoning would allow the salvage with certain requirements specific to the salvage business, to include a prior presence of block, line of sight of the neighboring properties and roads. This application was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission and they voted to recommend approval. recommend approval.
All right. Any council discussion regarding the ordinance before you, uh, rezoning one oh one South Washington? Community Development Director Simmons, what kind of timeline does the owner have for the, uh, getting that fence and those trees up?
Yeah. Well, once the, if the rezoning is to occur, the owner would have to be in compliance, uh, pretty much right away. So, they'll have to work with the Building Department to secure a certificate of occupancy for that use. Uh, so they'll have to work with Community Development to establish a timeline for making that happen.
John, do you think they're aware of the, the expense this thirty?
They were aware of that expense at the Planning and Zoning Meeting, yes. They understood the ten-foot fence and the, the tree buffering that would have to occur. That was explained to them. Now, did they process that yet? I don't know.
John, is the trees to, if you're up on Washington Bridge looking down, hitting south, you're going to be able to see all that?
Right, yes.
Is that what the trees?
No, the buffering is for neighboring properties being buffered from that that are not in the same district or from the roadway. Okay? So, it doesn't address the, the bridge being elevated.
All right. Thank you, Director Simmons. All right, having heard, uh, no other further council discussion, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one oh eight. An ordinance granting a change in zoning classification from M-one, light industrial, to M-two, heavy industrial on certain property located at one oh one South Washington in the City of Sudae, Missouri, in accordance with Chapter sixty-four of the City Code of the City of Sudae, Missouri.
Second reading?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one oh eight. An ordinance granting a change in zoning classification from M-one, light industrial, to M-two, heavy industrial on certain property located at one oh one South Washington in the City of Sudae, Missouri, in accordance with Chapter sixty-four of the City Code of the City of Sudae, Missouri.
Final passage?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Oldham?
Yes.
Five yes, two no, one absent.
All right, ordinance passes. Thank you, council.
The last item I have tonight is a motion, second, to formally reject bid for the demolition of structure located at nine oh four South Parisson. The structure at nine oh four South Parisson was deemed a dangerous building, and the owners were given a specified amount of time to repair the building to eliminate the hazardous conditions or demolish it. The property was not repaired or demolished by the deadline, so staff proceeded with the process to perform the demolition abatement. The demolition of this house would be too complex for the city's equipment, so requests for proposal, RFPs, were sent out and bids were received. Since then, new owners expressed interest in purchasing the property and rehabilitating it. They presented a change in circumstances to the Board of Appeals, and this board granted an extension of time to repair the building to eliminate the dangerous conditions. Therefore, staff recommends rejecting all bets for demolition to close out the procurement process since it is no longer needed.
All right, any council discussion regarding the bid rejection?
Motion to reject bid.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, council.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Chairwoman Foster. Up next, we have Public Works. Chairman Oldham, you have the floor.
We have four items tonight under Public Works. The first item is an annexation utility service agreement with Joy and Byron Goodman for the property located at sixty-two hundred Highway Y.
Any council discussion regarding the, uh, ordinance authorizing the annexation agreement? Having heard done, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one oh nine. An ordinance authorizing an annexation utility services agreement for connection to the City of Sudae's water distribution system.
Second reading?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, council.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one oh nine. An ordinance authorizing an annexation and utility services agreement for connection to the City of Sudae's water distribution system.
Final passage?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bogus is absent. Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no.
Ordinance passes. Thank you, council.
Second item I have tonight is a budget, budget amendment, and this is relating to an ordinance we approved last fiscal year. Uh, since that project was not completed last fiscal year, we need a budget amendment to carry over the appropriation of the funds to this fiscal year.
Okay. Any council discussion regarding the resolution ordinance connected to this budget amendment? Having heard done, call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution two thousand twenty-nine. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Sudae, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, council. Uh, the, uh, resolution passes.
You can do a roll call if you want.
No, that's all right. All right, now we have the ordinance. Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one ten. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four regarding rail ballast maintenance.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one ten. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four regarding rail ballast maintenance.
Final passage?
Second.
All right, now we can do that roll call, though.
Hiller?
Yep.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
And Bogus is absent. Seven yes, one no.
Ordinance passes. Thank you, council.
Third item I have is a change order for sidewalk repair along New York Avenue. We approve this job based on the scope of work, and then as normal, we approve a change order for the difference, for the difference of three thousand, just lost, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents.
Okay, do I have a council discussion regarding the ordinance authorizing the change order? Having heard done, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one eleven. An ordinance authorizing change order number two to finalize sidewalk repairs and add additional sidewalk.
Second reading?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, council.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, one eleven. An ordinance authorizing change order number two to finalize sidewalk repairs and add additional sidewalk.
Final passage?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus is absent, and Hiller?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no.
All right, ordinance pass.
Fourth and final item I have tonight is a resolution that we do annually, and it is the resolution that authorize our staff to apply for the tree resource improvement and maintenance grant, or TRIM grant, uh, as a tree city. It's something that we, uh, we receive, it's around ten thousand dollars, that allow us to maintain an inventory and maintenance of our trees and public groundways.
All right, any council discussion regarding the resolution? Having heard done, call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution two thousand thirty. A resolution authorizing an application to assess and re-inventory trees within the city's rights of way and public spaces.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution passes. Thank you, council.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Oldham. Up next, we have Public Safety. Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Mr. Shaw brought to our attention a, a request for, uh, sale of fireworks within the city limits. Uh, I don't know the origin of this request. Uh, there was no other speaking for it. Everyone at the committee spoke against it. Actually, all the police represented and Mr. Hiller and myself were against it. So, um, I don't know what happened to it now. I guess we discuss it. But, uh, you know, it's our job to, uh, formulate a set of rules that allow people to live closely together without annoying each other. Uh, there's enough of annoying that goes on without adding fireworks. I think, which we're going to have illegally anyway, but if we say, okay, you can do it legally, I think that most flies the problem.
That is an excellent way to put it, Chairman Robinson. I like that. We, we do have to keep people from annoying you.
Try to, you know, you don't think about it from that point of view, but you really should.
Can I, can I speak?
Oh, yeah, this is an open discussion, goes.
My feelings, and, and BD said the same, is we do not allow fireworks in our city. Okay? And, and I, I get the tax dollars and all that, but in the same sentence, I can, I can hear it now, well, when the police officer walks up, you know, you're under arrest for shooting fireworks off into city limits. Well, I bought it in the city limits, so I, I don't think we need to add that to our city.
The fire department didn't have a representative there, but I can't imagine.
I mean, we have one right here.
I, I apologize for not being at that meeting. Um, my calendar got messed up, and I, I was at work, but I just, I, I avoided the meeting. I apologize. So, this came up because of me. I was.
We figured out, started.
So, I was asked a few weeks ago from a, from a person I ran into, why the City of Sudae doesn't allow for the sale of fireworks within the city limits of Sudae. And my answer to him was, well, it's just the way it's always been. I didn't feel that that was a good answer. I didn't, I felt that that was an uneducated answer that I gave him, but it was the only answer I had at the time. So, my question to Mr. Shaw was, when I approached him, is, is that why do we not allow for the sales of fireworks in the city? We've reviewed the fire code. It is against the fire code to, to sale or discharge fireworks. That includes the Fourth of July fireworks that are going to happen at the fairgrounds, that includes the Hotel Bothwell. Those are all prohibited by the fire code. But we allow permits and special use permits to do that, and, and, and we do. So, the question that I had for Mr. Shaw was, is that why, why don't we do that? Um, and that was really how this conversation started. It wasn't a conversation coming to advocate for the sale of fireworks. It wasn't a conversation to, to, to say, no, we don't want to do that. It was simply a question of why we don't, so that the next time somebody asks me, I have an educated answer to give them. That's, that's really what, what this, what this started out as. And I understand Mr. Hiller, or Councilman Hiller's, his request of saying, you know, if we shot them off inside the city limits, we bought them inside the city limits. There's a lot of things that we buy inside the city limits that are illegal to use inside the city limits and, and, or drinking and driving. We buy a lot of alcohol, but we drive in the city. I mean, there's a, I mean, and I don't want to get in an argument, and I'm not either for or against it. I was just trying to get an answer to a question that a member of the community asked me, and I had an uneducated answer for them. That is, that is really how this, this came about. And so, that's why I asked, and, and it is a revenue stream, it could be a revenue stream, but you're, you're right. It, it, not everything is worth the revenue stream. So, that's how this came up. It wasn't a matter of, I want this to happen, not a matter that I don't want it to happen. You know, many years ago, everybody had cedar shake shingles on the roof. Made sense not to fire a, something, a ball of fire up in the air that was going to fall on that, that wooden roof. You know, now we have asphalt shingles, steel roofing, and all of those kind of things. So, it really wasn't a, hey, let's do this. It was, why do we not do it, is really what the question was. Yeah, that's, uh, that's interesting, and I, as far as thinking about things that we do do inside the city limit, I mean, we sell inside the city limits, if firearms. Can't shoot them inside the city limits. We allow the sale of firearms and ammunition inside city limits, but you can't go up and set up a firing range, no matter how much I want you in my backyard that you might got. It's not going to work. So, that's interesting. So, and, and so that is all this was, was that, so I would have an educated answer to give back to a citizen if they asked me again.
Well, and I guess I would echo those comments as well, as far as, you know, I think we as staff owe it to you all to, to bring these questions up.
Okay.
For you all to discuss and, uh, and, and what your decision is. And towards that end, I, um, I asked our, our law firm, uh, uh, to, to review what their communities, what other communities in our region that they serve, what they do, and they kind of came, they, not kind of, they came up with, um, a review, kind of, I, I can't remember what you called it, Joe, but the, the team there basically kind of.
The hive mind.
The hive mind, yeah, there you go. Um, and so, they, they put together these that, uh, uh, this is what some of the other communities do, or as far as options is drawn from what some of the other communities do. So, again, we, we throw those out to you as options, um, you know, that, and, you know, there's, uh, there's also the, the state statute there, it just basically says you can regulate fireworks. You can, uh, and regulation includes prohibiting, uh, and then our City Code, uh, thirty-six one twenty-three is where it comes from, and I just summarized there, no person shall buy, sell, display, or discharge any fireworks within the city. So, you can change that to be whatever you want it to be, or leave it the way it is. And, uh, you know, you can still prohibit discharge, but, uh, uh, but, uh, allow selling, um, you know, or you can continue, like I said, if it is, or you could even allow discharge if you wanted to. Um, I wouldn't recommend it, but, um, um, but, uh, that's, that's, that's all it is. Um, nothing, nothing nefarious here, just bringing it up. And, uh, kind of the thought is, is that if, uh, if you wanted to change that, if you dealt with it today, or not today, but if you dealt with it here in the next couple council meetings, then that would give vendors a year to adjust to whatever you wanted to change it to.
As it goes to, you know, uh, there is a plus, plus side where the city would be able to, like, get the taxes off of it, if, if they were allowed to sell.
Yeah, I could also make the argument that you are setting up artificial, um, um, incentives to folks to set up just outside the city limits in tents of people that don't live and don't, uh, don't have employees in the area, and that are unfairly competing against the bricks and mortar stores that are here, here around that, say Walmart. Why can't Walmart sell fireworks inside, inside Walmart?
They do.
They don't sell fireworks, they sell the sprinklers, the little poppers. Yeah, so they're, they're able to sell those things, but they're not able to sell, and, you know, take another one, uh...
Menards, those, we get those requests.
And they're right, right across, essentially across the road, there's a tent that's set up from somebody outside that's coming in and selling, selling against them.
And you have a tent inside the city limits? That resides outside the city limits, but it is well within the city limits on Mitchell Road.
Yeah, because it's a donut hole.
Yeah, but it is a donut hole in the city limits that he has allowed.
Whenever...
And that tent is up, by the way.
Inevitably, that week surrounding the Fourth of July, we are paying police officers to drive around and enforce our ordinance regarding the discharge of these.
So, when you're... Keith, how do you feel about it?
I mean, as he's walking up, the pink elephant in the room, the elephant in the room is, there's a whole lot of fireworks that are shot off inside the city limits.
I think Mr. Lopper had a...
And it's just impossible for me to catch it.
Um, you know, I, I respect whatever decision you guys make, and we'll work with it. Um, I do have concerns about the mixed, uh, signals that sends the, the community, having them be, uh, legal to purchase and buy and, um, possess within the city but not be able to discharge. There's been other examples of it. I did recommend to the fire chief that they start responding to fire calls if this is switched, 'cause I thought that would be a good idea, since it's a dispatcher.
Fire calls, yeah.
Yes, fire begins in it, so...
We will need one of those electronic forget machines.
So, uh, he didn't, uh, didn't, that didn't go over well. But, um, anyway, uh, you know, we'll, we'll work through it. I just, I do have concerns, and, I mean, my opinion is probably not popular, but it is, it's not my favorite thing to do. Um, I also lean more towards a, it's either all or none. It is difficult for us to handle the fireworks calls at the fireworks season. We try to put extra people on. We do categorize, or I shouldn't say categorize, we do prioritize fireworks calls, and they are lower than other calls. If someone calls in and they need, if it's anything to do with life-threatening, that's always gonna come before a fireworks call. Sometimes they do set pending. Um, there were some, some serious injuries and even deaths with fireworks in the past, which have probably jaded my opinion to a certain extent, but again, we'll work through whatever you guys decide.
Uh, Joe, did you have some data?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just two considerations. One, I noticed the list did not include, uh, something like, uh, for example, I know that, like, Lee Summit does, which is, they do, uh, require anyone that does sell within their city limits, uh, to put a, uh, basically, like, a flyer in with every purchase that says what the city's ordinances are. And then the other consideration is, is, you know, keep in mind, you know, that fifty and sixty-five is a gateway between, you know, Kansas City and the lakes, and so, you're gonna have people that are traveling through that aren't intending to, you know, stay for the weekend or stay for the holiday in Sedalia that are passing through, and that might be an opportunity for you to, you know, be selling to people who aren't, you know, going to be staying here, so it's, as a person who used to do that on a regular basis.
Yeah.
We're always looking for that.
That's true.
Joe, what other municipalities do you have that allow it?
Um, it would be faster for me to tell you the ones that, that...
So, more happens, allow it than not?
More, more allow than don't allow. Uh, other cities that don't allow, like, I can just think off the top of my head, would be like the city of Grandview, for example. They do not allow, which is interesting, because they are the headquarters for Black Cat in this area, um, which I thought that was interesting, but...
That is interesting.
Well, we, uh, one last comment, but we, we are gonna have fireworks set off in the city, and I know it's hard, really hard to catch them, but this year especially, it's so dry. Uh, let, let's really kinda reinforce this idea that we do not allow fireworks inside our city limits, because, uh, if it continues the way it is, we could get overwhelmed pretty quickly if we had a lot of it going on in town.
Yeah, as far as the discharge.
And since I live on eleven acres in the middle of town, I'd really appreciate it. Back if there's not a big draft, I'd kinda do my best.
The burn, I understand that there was no fireworks. Correct?
I'm not sure where that came from. Uh, the city of Sedalia, we, it, it, it's against the law to discharge fireworks, so that was not included in our burn ban. I'm not sure what the county did.
Uh, this county, this county has a no burn right now.
Yeah, the county wired no burn ban, but I'm not sure they have the executive authority to, to, to say no fireworks.
It said, it said, while I read, it said that there would be no fireworks.
And if, if that's, if that is something that they made, that, that is in the county.
Yeah. Good luck with that.
Different jurisdiction.
Yeah, this is not my jurisdiction.
You, you off my, what you want, but, the fire, I never grew up with fireworks. State of Iowa has never allowed fireworks.
I spent thousands of dollars on fireworks.
Unless it's that, that driving in or whatever, and, and, I, you know, I, to me, it's just blowing up money, so...
It absolutely is, and it's, that's two seconds that you get.
Well, I'll, I'll make a comment, as in, starting the direction for staff, I'd like to see an ordinance that would allow the sale of fireworks, since I, I'd be in favor of that.
Would you make that motion?
I make a motion, uh, to direct staff to create an ordinance that would allow, uh, the sale of fireworks within city limits.
Do I have a second?
Point of clarification, you, do you still want discharge prohibited?
No, discharge prohibited.
Okay, so just, just modifying to allow the thing?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No, aye.
Uh, uh, I'm pretty sure the opposed have a key poll, Jason, do you mind polling everybody then?
Sure.
Um, Robinson?
Nope.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Nope.
Bogus is absent. Hiller?
Nope.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
No.
Bliss?
What's the count?
Your mayor, if I can...
I'm the mayor, I think I wanna vote.
Would it make it tied if I vote?
It, it won't be a tie.
Yeah, it'll be tied.
No. Sorry.
You're honored.
Okay, well, the, uh, I appreciate council's input on that. That puts that to rest. No, I, we can always bring it back next time if you want.
Well, and the ordinance requires five, so you're off of it.
Yeah, all right, uh... Moving along on the agenda, other business, we've got, I've got a lot of appointments and reappointments, so let's get the ball rolling. Jason, will you please read the, uh, appointments and reappointments?
Members of the city council, from Mary Andrew Dawson, regarding new appointments and reappointments. New appointments, Sedalia Main Streets, Board of Directors, Kathy Smith, replacing Rebecca M. Hauser, three-year term expiring January twenty-twenty-six. Housing Authority Board of Directors, Larry Parham, replacing John Cady, four-year term expiring June twenty-twenty-seven. Public Library Board, Lake and Jenke, replacing Alice Clopton, three-year term, July one, twenty-twenty-three to June thirty, twenty-twenty-six. And then reappointments, Animal Advisory Control Board, Sue Hecker, three-year term expiring June twenty-twenty-six. Board of Appeals, Rob Rawlings, five-year term expiring June twenty-twenty-eight. Bothwell Regional Health Center, Board of Trustees, Deidre Eskville, four-year term expiring June twenty-twenty-seven. Doctor Greg, Doctor Gregory Dope, four-year term expiring June twenty-twenty-seven. Sedalia Main Streets, Board of Directors, Sonny Broyles, three-year term expiring January twenty-twenty-six. And Abby Norman, three-year term expiring January twenty-twenty-six. Citizens Traffic Advisory Commission, Byron Matson, three-year term expiring June twenty-twenty-six. And Deidre Eskville, three-year term expiring June twenty-twenty-six. Housing Authority Board of Directors, Catherine Briscoe, four-year term expiring June twenty-twenty-seven. Park Board, Jerry Case, three-year term expiring June twenty-twenty-six. Cindy Herrick, three-year term expiring June twenty-twenty-six. Megan Simon, three-year term expiring June twenty-twenty-six. Planning and Zoning Commission, Rhonda Ahern, four-year term expiring June twenty-twenty-seven. Jerry Ross, four-year term expiring June twenty-twenty-seven. And Talbert Rowe, four-year term expiring June twenty-twenty-seven. Public Library Board, Jackie Marshall, three-year term, July one, twenty-twenty-three to June thirty, twenty-twenty-six. And Dana Foster, three-year term, July one, twenty-twenty-three to June thirty, twenty-twenty-six. Sedalia Historic Preservation Commission, William Mezerly, three-year term expiring July twenty-twenty-six. And Charles Wise, three-year term expiring July twenty-twenty-six. Sedalia Redevelopment Corporation Board of Directors, Chris Marshall, two-year term expiring November twenty-twenty-four. Lucas Richardson, two-year term expiring November twenty-twenty-four. And Doctor Todd Fraley, two-year term expiring November twenty-twenty-four. Tree Board, Chris Rippey, three-year term expiring June twenty-twenty-six. And Doctor Douglas Kibberts, three-year term expiring June twenty-twenty-six. Zoning Board of Adjustment, Lee Scribner, five-year term expiring June twenty-twenty-eight. That's all.
Motion to approve and block?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you, council. As you can tell, June is a busy month for appointments.
We should call for extension, 'cause we have a couple of council members on there.
Oh, yep, 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 uh...
Any extension?
Any extension?
That's it.
Do I got anybody else?
Do I need to extend?
Nope, you're not, you're still good, 'cause you're good through November. All right, there we go. Thank you, council. Uh, let's see, other business, we've got a few liquor licenses to approve, uh, one new one, and several renewals, so we'll call for the reading of them.
Okay, we have one new liquor license and five renewals. New liquor license for Larry Goffrelle, doing businesses, Nukuny LLC, at twenty-four oh one West Broadway, for liquor by the drink and Sunday sales. And then renewals for Kathy Getz, doing businesses, Break Time, number thirty-eighty-three, at eight oh eight East Broadway, for packaged liquor. Brent E. Jones II, doing businesses, Jeffy Stop Food Mark, number five ninety-one, at seventeen twenty-two West Broadway, for packaged liquor and Sunday sales. Adrianne Taines, doing businesses, Applebee's Neighborhood Bar and Grill, at thirty-three twenty West Broadway, for liquor by the drink and Sunday sales. Jagdish Modi, doing businesses, Liquor Locker, at five thirteen West Main, for packaged liquor and Sunday sales. And Garrett Volker, doing businesses, Volker's Eatery and Pub, at ten twenty-one South Limit, for liquor by the drink and Sunday sales.
Motion to approve and block.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, council. Up next, we have, uh, miscellaneous items from city council or city administrator. You guys got anything you wanna bring up or talk about?
Just like to say happy Juneteenth, um, nice, uh, nice celebration, and, uh, um, and I also, um, appreciate the United Way and for all you all do.
Anybody else?
Uh, this Saturday is the Sedalia firefighters', uh, memorial ride.
There's a memorial, there's a lot going on this Saturday.
There is a lot going on.
There's a lot going on this Saturday. There's some memorial riders flying in.
Butterflies at the park.
You do get to have a park, and, and, and everything. Don't get sick, don't have a fire, 'cause we're gonna get all...
Yeah, remember the fly-in, and, uh, I will take Amy to ride down and run with it.
Hi, just from my office, I do have, uh, room on a couple of boards, uh, see Animal Advisory, Control Advisory Board was one, and there was one other one. If anybody has any interest, probably, let me know.
I don't have any time for that, you know.
I, I'm just kidding. Uh, I know you got lots going on, but if anybody has any interest for that, I mean, feel free to reach out to my office and get you, get you an application, get some information from you, and, uh, give me an opportunity to serve the community on a board. Anybody else got anything? Having heard none, we'll go ahead and open up the floor to the, uh, for Good and Welfare. If anybody has anything they'd like to address council on, except the microphone, you got to state your name and your address, and you got three minutes.
Renee Vance, one nine eight one three, Tangle Creek, Sedalia. I'm here as a board member and representative for the Sedalia Senior Center, and we all want the activities that are going on, on Saturday. Um, we have got tickets with, uh, will be of your attendance. I understand fundraisers are a little difficult, but I have some tickets, and I'll be more than happy to sell them to you right now. Uh, fifty dollars per ticket, but it will benefit the Sedalia Senior Center, our at-home meals, that we're delivering, uh, almost five thousand for homebound, so...
What's the timeline as far as the dinner, and then the presentations and things like that for Saturday?
We have it from five to eight. Uh, the dinner will start about five-thirty, quarter to six. Uh, presentation, we have a great emcee.
Well, you and I mentioned too, it's the people that are gonna be honored.
Yes, uh, we are honoring Alan Hawkins from, uh, Rueda Anderson from the hospital, and also Rhonda Schafant from State Fair Community College, as well as the paper and everything else, so... We've got three superb seniors that we do also deliver to, so we want you to hear their stories. Uh, fifty dollars per, or four hundred dollars per table.
What time does the program start?
Program will start about six-thirty, I believe. I don't have the itinerary right in front of me.
And the doors open at five-thirty? Pardon, sir? Doors open at five-thirty?
The doors are open at five.
Five?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? All right, having heard no further public comment, we will go ahead and, uh, we'll...
Motion to move to closed-door session for legal advice, real estate, and negotiated contracts.
All right, second? Second, roll call, please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, council, we have, uh, one item for your consideration, it's an ordinance, selling seven point five acres on Sedalia Road to Davis Trucking. Any council discussion regarding the ordinance?
We need a mo, motion and a second mayor to open.
Oh, motion second, I'm sorry.
Motion open?
Sorry, I get... Uh, do I need a roll call?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.